Going to call the zoning board of appeals meeting to order. Can we start with the roll call?
Rocco Limatone.
James Meyer.
Aziz Hassan.
And Norma Drummond. Can I ask everyone to stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, we do have a couple changes to our agenda. Item number one, there is nothing new. We will open the agenda, but even though the board asked for the applicant to actually come to this meeting, we did get a request that they are on vacation, so they did ask if they could come in August, so they'll give us an update at that point. So, we will have to open it adjourned if there's no new information. Item number three, the applicant has withdrawn the application, and because it's already gone to public hearing, there's no refund of their application fee. Pam can refund their escrow without anything. And then today, we got a request from the applicant for item number nine, to hold off on their decision this evening because they were made aware that we were going to be missing one board member this evening. So, hopefully, we'll have everybody here in August. If not, they may face the same situation then, so... All right, so with that being said, our next meetings coming up are going to be Tuesday, August 27th, and Tuesday, September 24th. We do have one set of minutes to approve with some slight amendments, so do I have a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, the first items on our agenda are public hearings. In some cases, these are public hearings that were previously opened, but we needed some additional information. Other informations, other public hearings will be the first opportunity for neighbors to comment on the applications that this board has already had a chance to review. After we're done with the public hearings, then we're going to get to reviews, which are generally the brand-new applications that the board has received. So, Jeannie, the lights are still not on in the lobby. I don't know if that's a concern or not, yeah?
Oh, it sort of looks closed when you come in the front.
Yeah, it really does look like there's not necessarily a meeting going on in here, so... Okay, so with that said, I'm going to go to item number one, which is Appeal 3882, Klaus Garage Inc. The Dave Lawrence owner of Klaus Garage Inc., 2619 Route 52, Hopewell Junction, has requested an expansion of a non-conforming use and interpretation of automobile service facility and used car sales, as well as a variance to the 100-foot buffer requirement on Route 52, in order to continue the outside display of cars pursuant to sections 194-3, 194-16, 194-86, 194-116, and Note 11 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to reconvene this public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, again, this is the one that I just explained, that there's no new information. At the last meeting, the board had asked the applicant to actually come, because it's been several months that we've been adjourning this, in the hope that they would be able to bring us some new information. So, are there any comments or questions from board members?
Oh, nothing from them.
Anybody from the public who wishes to comment on the Klaus Garage? Seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn this once again to the August 27th meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so, item number two, Appeal 3907, Acevito, Eric Acevito, 109 South Vacation Drive, Wappingers Falls, is requesting a two-foot variance for a proposed six-foot fence to be located in the front yard, as well as a variance for a proposed above-ground pool to be located in front of the dwelling pursuant to sections 194-98 and 194-95 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to reconvene the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Good evening.
Good evening.
So, we did last month have an opportunity to have the first public hearing after we had previously reviewed your application, just to bring the record, you know, to reflect where we're at at this point. You have a, you're in Hillside Lake, you have a home that stretches for, literally, from street to street.
Yeah.
And because you have frontage on both roads, you technically have two front yards.
Yeah.
And so, even though your house fronts onto one street, South Vacation Drive, as opposed to East Vacation Drive, is your rear, what you use as your rear lot, but technically you have frontage on there, so it's another front yard. So, anything that you do behind your house is still technically in a front yard.
Yeah.
And so, what you've asked, you've asked for a pool, but you're asking to put it very, very close to your home, not at all close to the other end of the yard, but you're also asking for a six-foot fence, which we kind of measured across last month, was going to be about 100 feet of vinyl fencing going across the back there. So, what we had asked last month was a landscape plan, which you did present, you know, to us ahead of time, so it was sent to us, and we had the opportunity to, each of us had the individual opportunity to review that.
Yes.
So, you're proposing sporadic?
I went to Sabelico's and checked out, you know, what they had, like, I think someone said, like, the juniper.
Yeah.
They're like about a foot around, five to six feet tall.
Right.
And we figured, sprouting out, because I knew you said you don't have to do 100 feet worth.
Not at all.
But we calculated it's 48 feet on each side of the door. So, we did, every 10 feet, we take about 30 feet, you know, kind of like in there between the 48 feet, so it'd be like five-foot increments of the white vinyl showing.
Right, and the idea of that is just to break up the whole span, large spans of the...
Which, at the end, after, like, we wish we'd have known earlier, but, you know, we thought it would, it would look nicer, you know? It was something we figured, you know, it would, because we decided we wanted to go for, like, the brown vinyl, but it was, like, triple the price, because it was like a custom fence.
Oh, wow, okay.
So, it doubled the price, actually tripled the price from what it was, so that it would have looked like wood.
Right.
But, you know...
So, with that, are there any comments or questions from board members?
None good.
No.
Okay, so is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request from Eric Acevito, 109 South Vacation Drive, Wappingers Falls, requesting a two-foot variance for a proposed six-foot fence to be located in the front yard, as well as a variance for a proposed above-ground pool to be located in the front of his dwelling, but really in his rear yard? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This is Appeal number 3907, Eric Acevito, requesting a two-foot variance for a proposed six-foot fence to be located in the front yard, and a variance for a proposed above-ground pool to be located in the front of the dwelling pursuant to section 194-99 and 194-95 of the zoning ordinance. Resolution offered by zoning board member Aziz Hassan, whereas the applicant has applied for a variance to allow a six-foot fence to be placed in the front yard, as well as an above-ground pool to be placed in front of the dwelling pursuant to section 194-99 and 194-95 of the zoning ordinance. And whereas this action is a type-two action under SECCAR, and no further action is required. And whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Dutch News on July 17, 2019, and whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on July 23, 2019, and whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, as the pool will be directly behind the applicant's house and not near the property line, and the long line of fence will have sporadic landscaping in front of it to reduce its visual impact. The desired result cannot be achieved by some other means, as the lot has road frontage on both the front and rear of the lot, and although the proposed pool would not require a setback variance, it does require the variance to be located in the front yard. The applicant would like to install the fence around the perimeter of this property for the safety of his children and pets. The variance requested is not substantial, as the neighbors would benefit from the six-foot fence in his, in his case, in this case, as it would keep the family's activities in their yard. The proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental condition, as the applicant would install plantings at sporadic locations along the fence to minimize its visual impact. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request of Eric Acevito of 109 South Vacation Drive, Wappingers Falls, for a two-foot variance for a proposed six-foot fence to be located in the front yard, as well as the variance for the proposed above-ground pool to be located in front of the dwelling pursuant to section 194-99 and 194-95 of the zoning ordinance. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of the resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Is there a second?
Second.
Votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So, your motion carries. Now, you just have to deal with the building department.
Thank you.
Okay, have a good night. All right, as I previously said, there is going to be no action on item number three, because it's been withdrawn. So, item number four is a, is a public hearing for Appeal 3872, Slow Shower. Eddie A. Slow Shower, 40 Brandy Lane, Wappingers Falls, is requesting a two-foot height variance for 38 linear feet of lattice fencing, which will be reduced to six feet in height, and is located in front of the dwelling, and a two-foot setback variance for all six-foot fencing pursuant to section 194-98 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, so, we've had the opportunity to review your application, and for quite a while, you were waiting for the town board to act on the fence and shed amnesty, which they have now done, so that's why we know you're back before us, and, you know, we're going to deal with the request at hand. You bought this house back in the '90s, the fencing that's up there now was existing at that time. It extends beyond, on the left side of your house, it extends up, running up the, on that left-side yard there, past the front of the house. On the right side, it actually comes to the front line of your house.
Correct.
But goes over to the other property line, runs down that full side, all the way to the back. Unbeknownst to you at the time, it actually was installed on the property line, so six-foot fencing is supposed to be the two feet in to allow for the maintenance.
Just a quick correction, Ms. Drummond, 15 years ago, I bought the property, but the fences have been there, from, according to the neighbors, 30-something years.
So, so the issue that you have is that your fencing right now is eight feet. You actually have lattice pieces that were, are installed sideways on posts, and that's what you've got.
Right, two four-foot pieces made it eight feet.
Right, so eight feet is just not allowed at all.
Correct.
You did pursue the variance for that, and in essence, even based on the recent action of the town board, they're even only considering it as six feet. So, you've agreed, you're going to cut it down, or more likely install, as you're replacing the pieces that you've acknowledged some of them are in.
Well, take the four feet off and replace it with a two-foot piece for six feet.
Right, so you're just going to reinstall the...
Correct.
Deteriorating pieces with new fencing at the six-foot level. So, comments or questions from board members?
None good.
I have none, yeah, we've reviewed this quite a few times.
Right.
I have no questions.
Okay, so is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request from Eddie Slow Shower, 40 Brandy Lane, Wappingers Falls, requesting a two-foot height variance for 38 linear feet of lattice fencing, which will be reduced to six feet in height, and is located in front of the dwelling, and a two-foot setback variance for six feet, for the six-foot, all six-foot fencing? So, seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And?
So, in reference to Appeal 3872 by Eddie Slow Shower, as indicated, requesting a two-foot height variance for 38 linear feet of lattice fencing, which will be reduced to six feet in height, and is located in front of the dwelling, and a two-foot setback requirements for, variance for all six-foot fencing pursuant to section 194-98 of the zoning ordinance, located at 40 Brandy Lane, Wappingers Falls, and resolution being offered by zoning board member James Meyer. And whereas the applicant has applied for said variance to allow a two-foot height variance for 38 linear feet of lattice fencing, which will reduce to six feet in height, and is located in front of the dwelling, and a two-foot setback variance for all six-foot fencing pursuant to section 194-98 of the zoning ordinance. Whereas this action is a type-two action under SECCAR, and no further action is required. Whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Dutch News on July 17, 2019. Whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on July 23, 2019. Whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, as the fence is eight feet high presently, and has been existing for over 25 years. The applicant has agreed to reduce, cut the fence down to six feet. The desired result cannot be achieved by some other means, as the fence is used to keep dogs in and for privacy between the neighboring properties. The variance request is not substantial, as the applicant is requesting the variances to replace the fence that has been there for a long period of time. The proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request by Eddie H. Slow Shower, 40 Brandy Lane, Wappingers Falls, for a two-foot height variance for 38 linear feet of lattice fencing, which will be reduced to six feet in height, and is located in front of the dwelling, and a two-foot setback variance for all six-feet fencing pursuant to section 194-98 of the zoning ordinance. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Is there a second?
Second.
Votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Your motion carries.
Just want to say thank you, everybody, for your patience. Bit of a process, but I do appreciate your understanding and your consideration. Just waiting for the town board to make a final decision, so thanks again, and enjoy the rest of the summer, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Take care, have a good evening. Okay, so, we are up to item number five, Appeal 3897. Lori and Amoridi, Daniel Lori and Lisa Amoridi, 35, Gary Williams Road. Holmes are requesting a two-foot variance for an existing eight-foot decorative fence in their rear yard pursuant to section 194-98B of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good evening, so again, you were also waiting for the fence amnesty to be resolved, because we had seen your application very many months ago.
Yeah.
But you actually have a different circumstance, yours, you're not asking for the eight-foot fence in the front of your house, you're actually asking for the eight-foot...
Behind.
It's a, it's a covered, black decorative fence that's not going to be seen, so its visibility is very, very limited.
Correct.
In your case, you're actually looking to protect, keep wildlife, bobcats and other things, because you've had, unfortunately, pets that have been impacted by wildlife in the past who have gotten into your yard, so... So, yours is a different circumstance, because it's in the rear yard, not in the front yard, regarding why we're even considering the eight-foot. So, questions or comments from board members?
None good.
No questions.
None by myself.
You're by yourself?
None by myself, none by me, none by me, whatever you want to say.
Sorry?
Don't pick on me, it was a hard day at work.
So, does anybody here wish to speak for or against the request from Daniel Lori and Lisa Amoridi, 35, Gary Williams Road, Holmes, requesting a two-foot height variance for an existing eight-foot decorative fence in their rear yard? Seeing, oh...
I would just like to say, I have no problem with her putting that fence up, because we do have a lot of wildlife, and it would be very helpful if she could be kept safe.
We appreciate that, thank you. Rick, is there any chance you can bring the clipboard over to this woman, so she can sign in for us? We're just going to ask you, we, for our minutes, we record the comments that we receive, so if you don't mind, if you can sign your name on the clipboard? Thank you.
Print your name, so we can...
Thank you, print your name, yes. We have run into the issue before, where the printing has not been legible, so Aziz is right, please print. Anybody else who wishes to offer any other comments? Again, comments like that are very helpful for us. So, seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And?
Appeal number 3897, applicant Daniel Lori, Lisa Amaraj?
Amajide.
Oh, okay.
Say that again?
We tried.
It's Gallego, so it's, so don't pronounce half of it.
Sorry about that, sorry I put you in there, I apologize. Name of the project is, it's a two-foot height variance for an existing eight-foot-high decorative fence in their rear yard pursuant to section 194-98B of the zoning ordinance. Location is 35 Gary Williams Road in Holmes. Tax map number is 675503029112, the zoning district is R3. Resolution is being offered by zoning board member Rocco Limatone. Whereas the applicant has applied for a two-foot height variance to allow an existing eight-foot decorative fence to remain in the rear yard pursuant to section 194-98B of the zoning ordinance. And whereas this action is a type-two action under SECCAR, and no further action is required. And whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Dutch News on July 17, 2019. And whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on July 23, 2019. And whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, as the fence is already existing, and cannot be seen from the road or the neighbor's property, as the lot is large and heavily wooded. The desired result cannot be achieved by some other means, as the fence is used to keep bobcats and coyotes from attacking the applicant's pets. The variance requested is substantial, but the applicant's property is over six acres in size, and is located on a non-town road, with no visibility from the road, and the fencing is black to better blend in with the existing vegetation. The proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request by Daniel Lori and Lisa Amarajade, 35, Gary Williams Road, Holmes, for a two-foot height variance for an existing eight-foot-high decorative fence in their rear yard pursuant to section 194-98B of the zoning ordinance. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of the resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner. Resolution seconded by zoning board member?
James Meyer.
Thank you. Votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So, your motion carries, you're all set.
So, no, I don't have to do anything else?
You still need a building permit for the fence.
Go to the building department.
Yes, so go to the building department.
Congratulations.
Thank you, folks.
All right, have a good evening.
Those coyotes away.
I know.
That's scary stuff.
All right. Item number six, Appeal 3913 Tucker, Lori A. Tucker, 157 Binawater Drive, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a special permit in order to bring in 5,000 cubic yards of fill pursuant to section 194-75 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good evening. So, we had the opportunity last month to review your application, and kind of talk through some of the issues. Binawater, the one side of the property, you have very limited backyards, because the slope of your property, the topography, just drops down significantly. I think you told us last week, last month, that there's probably like a 45-foot drop in the, your property down this gulf.
Correct.
There's no wetlands in the area, so the impact associated with filling in or having some fill delivered is not going to impact any neighbors by reducing area for water stores or anything like that.
No.
The impact, honestly, is going to be the trucks that would be carrying in the fill. And so, one of the things we needed to hear from was your neighbors. I do understand some of your other neighbors have brought other fill into their property, but, you know, that was, it's because of the impact associated with the trucking, we certainly had an obligation to make sure that, you know, if any of your neighbors wanted to be heard, we had that opportunity. So, are there any questions or comments from board members?
None good.
None by me.
Okay, thank you. So, is there anyone here who's, did I open this public hearing?
Yes.
Thank you, I didn't write it down. Usually, I write my own cheat notes here. So, is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request from Lori Tucker, 157 Binawater Drive, Hopewell, requesting a special permit in order to bring in 5,000 cubic yards of fill?
Yeah, hi, this, good evening. My name is David Stanger, 62 Flower Road, I'm an adjoining neighbor. And I 100% support this application for Lori, who we just met, I'm on the other side of the hill.
No idea who he is.
Over, over on Flower Road, so I'm on the other end, but your property extends back that far.
Okay.
And because of that, they gave me this. But I want to, and I saw the application on an old survey, some pencil marks where the fill's going to go, some pencil marks where the silt fence is going to go, and that's all good, and I'm very happy that you're going to get this, but I just want to share with you some things in particular, you need to be careful.
Just, Mr. Stanger, you're just, you're going to direct your comments to us, she will hear them.
Okay, I want to, I want to share some things for the applicant to be aware.
Sure.
I had an application in here last month. I had an approved Shenandoah Road, 570 Shenandoah Road. I had an approved plot plan with approved grading, approved elevation, approved location of the house. I sent a representative in here last month, just to see if we can import 300 yards of fill.
Yep.
Although we could get it from our backyard, we didn't want to tear the trees, they don't get it.
Right.
I don't know what happened, but this board overreached their jurisdiction and questioned the grading that was approved by the town, questioned the location of the house that was approved by the town, questioned the elevation, where the as-built was right spot-on. The only thing I was asking for was to import 300 yards, so I could achieve the proper grading that was approved by this town.
Okay.
And with that, let me finish.
Did I finish?
And with that, I had brought some fill in, that was allowable fill to be brought in, it was questioned by this board. You wanted to dig test holes, you wanted an engineer to take a look at it, and then another gentleman next door stood up and said, hey, I'm getting water in my basement. Never once has he ever called the town prior, ever called me prior. The swells are a foot below his basement, but yet, this board just took it, substantiated story, and said, ooh, whoa, we got a problem here. I don't think the ZVA has any, any jurisdiction in planning or in building. I, I built over 1,000 homes in this area, I've never been in front of the ZVA once. I sent a simple request for 300 yards of import, so I didn't have to destroy the backyard.
Okay.
And after we went through all this...
I'm just trying to get to, how does this relate to the...
Because I need her to be careful of this board, because you guys overreach.
Okay.
And she needs to be careful, because there's things that they will say here, I know I'm supposed to address you, but there are things this board does that is overreaching. You have planning, you have engineering, you have building. You aren't all those things.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. That's total discrimination, because I'm a builder and I know that.
I...
I'm not quite sure what to say, but you have a totally mischaracterized meeting, so the extent that you attacked the board, I soundly disagree with you. You had neighbors that came forward that had raised questions. There was a question as to whether the fill contained inappropriate things, we merely asked the engineer to check on it. That's all we asked to do.
And he had a representative here, sorry, Jim, who could not answer the questions.
Yes, that's the problem. So, whatever reason that you're upset, it's unfortunate, but I don't think you understood what happened at the meeting. Maybe if you had been here yourself, the questions would have been answered, and it would have been no problem. But there is no discrimination against builders by this board.
And the meeting is certainly available for you to view at your convenience, so you can actually see what happened, okay?
Also, I'd like to add that these meetings are videotaped.
Right.
So, you can, they're on the internet, so you can rewind it and watch it as many times as you want.
Yep.
And then there are also minutes written in writing, so you can see who said what, so it's very clear. So, there's like multiple ways of verifying, because we did ask the representative all these questions, and unfortunately, there were some issues that were coming up, and we didn't have, we didn't get our answers, so...
You didn't need to, you didn't need to be there.
Well, if I may, just point that the application was withdrawn.
Yes.
No determination was made by the board, so there's no way of knowing how the board was going to determine it, and they have, they have every right to board when neighbors raise issues to make reasonable inquiries as to it, so...
So, all right, so we're back to the request at hand.
I think that's really enough to be said.
And this commentary, to the extent that you do have to be very careful, not from us, but the people who bring your fill.
Yes, absolutely.
As other situations where people have, we have approved fill, and that has to be monitored, and what they brought in was inappropriate, and then the EPA gets involved, and you have a big issue.
Right.
So you need to keep an eye on what's actually being brought in, and that you're dealing with somebody reputable to make sure that is clean fill.
But the ZVA goes out, not the building department.
Okay. Is there anybody else who wishes to offer comments? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think we're gonna do a closing...
We're gonna close in reserve?
Yes.
Yeah, this was a closing reserve, correct. So, I'm gonna amend the motion to say that it's a closing reserve.
Because of the fill, we're gonna wanna write, write this resolution very carefully. Okay? So...
Because you want to make sure it's clean fill, not leftover from some EPA site.
No, I agree. Thank you.
Okay, so it's a close and reserve, I am amending the motion to...
And as amended, I again second it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. All right, so we'll put you on for a decision for next month. Okay? Okay? Thank you. Thank you. The date, the 23rd? August 27th.
7th.
Okay, yeah. All right, item number seven, Appeal 3914 Teal, Scott Teal, 115 East Mountain Road, Wapengers Falls, is requesting a 12-foot sideline variance in order to construct a 10-foot by 18-foot shed pursuant to section 194-107B3 of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening. You have a, you have a...
Do I have a motion to open the public hearing? Hold on.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now we can go.
You, you said 12-foot variance.
Yeah, sideline.
It's supposed to be three foot, that's why I'm applying for a variance.
Hold on, I'm gonna...
It might have been a mis, you know, misprint.
Nope, I want to pull out your application, so hold on. Scott, here you are.
It's supposed to be 15.
It's supposed to be 15. How feet is your, how close is your shed to the property line?
I don't have the shed yet.
Oh, it's gonna be 12.
How close will it be?
Theoretically, three feet.
It's gonna be three feet to the property line?
Yes.
So you need a 12-foot variance.
Because you're taking...
It's supposed to be 15 feet.
So you're taking 12 feet away.
Yeah, that's what it is.
Threw me off, I'm like...
Okay.
That's understood.
Okay, so you have a property that's just under an acre, you've got the residence with the attached garage, you're just, you're looking to add a shed onto the property. That's what you've given us. Oh, you're the one that gave us the whole profile of the shed, the actual building itself.
Yeah.
Because we were impressed by the price of it, but then we saw it really, you still have to put it together.
Yeah, and I upgraded anyway, you know, make it a little prettier.
Okay. Does it match the house? That's gonna be an important consideration.
Well, that's why I want to, this is what I want to do, I want to kind of make it match the house, because it's just, it's T-111, I'm gonna do a board and bat so it matches the house.
Nope, that's fine, that's important for your neighbors to understand, so, all right, and this is the one where you gave us the survey, and you have the property that...
Three, five...
Technically, it's three lots, but it's really not, because even collectively, but it, you have one little piece that kind of goes over to Sunset Drive?
Yes.
Right, so that's, so where you're proposing to do, your neighbor has a very similar situation, so you're, you're represented to us at the last meeting that your neighbor was not likely to object, so I don't know if you had an opportunity to get any labor, letters from your neighbors, but, you know...
No, neither one of them, you know, they both have kind of outbuildings in that area, so...
Yeah, so, this is a property, actually, your property, your house actually sits down the hill a little bit, so, just a little bit, no? If I'm remembering correctly?
No, my house is kind of on the top of the hill.
Sorry, there's so many things that we look at.
One of the neighbors, they sit down the hill, the guy in the corner of Sunset and Mountain Road. He's a little lower.
The one, so your, but is your shed the one that's actually crossing over the property line? It's in the front here?
Can I...
I think it's this one.
Was there a shed in the front of the, along the driveway?
On Grace Road.
Along Grace Road? And maybe did that come down?
Many years ago, yes.
Okay, because it's showing up on your survey here, but I don't remember it being raised as an issue, so it's probably come down. So you're talking about something that's further back in the property, and that's where it's abutting, well, essentially abutting your neighbor's property.
Correct.
Okay. Comments or questions from board members?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Fine.
So is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request from Scott Teal, 115 East Mountain Road, Wapengers Falls, requesting a 12-foot sideline variance to construct a 10-foot by 18-foot shed? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This is Appeal number 3914, applicant is Scott Teal, requesting a 20, a 12-foot sideline variance for a proposed 10-foot by 18-foot shed pursuant to section 194-107B3 of the zoning ordinance. Resolution offered by zoning board member Aziz Anson, whereas the applicant has applied for a 12-foot sideline variance for a proposed 10-foot by 18-foot shed pursuant to section 194-107B3 of the zoning ordinance, and whereas this action is a type-two action of secret, and no further action is required, and whereas a legal notice was published in the Southern Dutchess News on July 17, 2019, and whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on July 23, 2019, and whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood as, as many, as many of the properties have sheds close to the property lines as there are undersized lots. The desired result cannot be achieved by some other means as the shed would be directly in the sight line of the neighboring property as well as the owner would have to remove a large two-and-a-half...
Oh, this is the chestnut tree.
Yeah.
Two-and-a-half diameter chestnut tree if the shed were built within the required setbacks. The variance requested is not substantial. The proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental condition, and therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request by Scott Teal, 115 East Mountain Road, Wapengers Falls, for a 12-foot sideline, sideline variance for the proposed 10-foot by 18-foot shed pursuant to section 194-107B3 of the zoning ordinance. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of the resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Is there a second?
Second.
Votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So your motion carries?
Thank you.
You just deal with the building permit now, the building department now, okay? Have a good evening. You don't have to see him tonight, to get your permit for the, nope, to get your permit for your shed, you'll just go in.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
You too. Good night.
Oh, he is here, okay. Item number eight, Appeal 3915 Smith, Craig Smith, 710 Pine Grove, Pine Grove Road, Wapengers Falls, is requesting a 10-foot sideline variance for a proposed generator pursuant to section 194-17 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
You can think about it, yes.
All in favor? Wow, we're gonna have fun with this one, Craig. How are you?
Awesome to see you.
Good, I, sorry, you were hiding behind people, I didn't see you there. All right, so you came before us last month, you submitted your application, that you're looking to put an emergency generator on your property. Certainly with all the multiples of storms that we've had around the property, it's a common occurrence. The configuration of your lot is a little strange, it's kind of, kind of like the last property owner where you, it kind of jets back a little bit, so it doesn't just, it's not squared off right, so, well, not right, but wrong or otherwise. But, and so you've actually got a side, a shed in that side area there, and so what you're proposing, because you don't have enough property in the back of your house to be able to put the generator there, which would be easier to install and shorter line there to, in terms of electric and everything else, you're proposing to put it back toward the shed because it kind of buffers it, it's from visually, buffers it from your neighbor. The shed, you know, might even absorb some of the noise when it's running, so we talked about the fact that the shed will not be using the generator, there's not, no work, there's no operation in the shed, it's not a man cave or anything like that. You know, it's, it's really, this is an emergency generator that will really only be used in the event of, you know, that your power is out.
That's correct.
So, do I have questions or comments from board members?
I'm good.
No comments.
I'm fine, and I would just comment that, you know, actually where he's located to help hide it, it will actually be more expensive running up.
Right, exactly, yeah.
So it's appreciated that you make that effort.
Yeah.
My neighbors are worth it.
Okay.
That's nice.
The only comment I have is if I lose power, I'm gonna be over here.
The parties at Craig's house.
I'm gonna pull a few.
Will help clean out your freezer for you, I guess, right? All right, so is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request from Craig Smith, 710 Pine Grove Road, Wapengers, requesting a 10-foot sideline variance for a proposed generator? Yes?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Rich Hitchen, and I live right next to Craig, and I support this motion or whatever you want to call it.
You're coming over to his house.
That's right, 110%, and my mom, who's 93, she couldn't come here tonight, but she also is in favor of him doing this, no problem.
Cool, thank you very much for coming.
You're welcome.
All right, if you don't mind, could you sign in on the clipboard over there? Thank you. Anybody else? Again, the comments are always very helpful, so, seeing no other comments, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So in reference to Appeal number 3915 with the applicant Craig Smith seeking a 10-foot sideline variance for a proposed generator pursuant to section 194-17 of the zoning ordinance located at 710 Pine Grove Road, Wapengers Falls, resolution being offered by zoning board member James Meyer, and whereas the applicant has applied for the 10-foot sideline variance for a generator pursuant to section 194-17 of the zoning ordinance, and whereas this is a type-two action under secret, and no further action is required, and whereas a legal notice was published in the Southern Dutchess News on July 17, 2019, and whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on July 23, 2019, and whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood as the lots are undersized and the location that the applicant is requesting is the furthest away from his neighbors and next to his shed. The desired result cannot be achieved by some other means as the lot is undersized and the applicant would need a variance for the generator in any other location on its property. The variance request is not substantial. The proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions, as a generator will not be used directly but only in event of power outages. Now therefore, be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request by Craig Smith, 710 Pine Grove Road, Wapengers Falls, for 10-foot sideline variance for a proposed generator pursuant to section 194-17 of the zoning ordinance. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Is there a second?
Second.
Votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So your motion carries. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much. Thank you to my neighbors that came out tonight.
Thank you.
I drank Guinness, by the way. Guys, keep that in there.
All right, so we are now done for the evening for the public hearings. I hope you understand that because the board does so much of its work ahead of time during the review stage, that we try to get through the hearings as smoothly as possible. So with that said, we're going to item number eight, nine, I had already said we're not going to be discussing. I did forget to say, by the way, there is no item number 11. We did also get a request from, that they are still working on their survey, so there is no item 11 this evening either. So item number 10, Appeal 3896 Cottrell, Gunther Cottrell, 110 Van Black Road, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a 1,600-square-foot variance for an existing 40-foot by 40-foot detached garage pursuant to section 194-107C of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Yes, Madam Chairman.
So...
Fair woman, nice to see you again. I hope you share the sentiment. The issue with the Cottrell file is somewhat complicated.
Mm-hmm.
My client built the structure without a building permit or any other permit required by this town.
Right.
And on a pro se basis, he filed an application here seeking relief from those requirements. I was retained after that occurred.
Right.
And it's pretty clear that there's some significant hurdles to be met, frankly, to get to the place where this board might consider the, the merit of his application. Now, I've been in this file for about three months, and some of this delay has been my own, but we have put together, I think, finally, Brian Stokosa, an engineer with whom this board is familiar, has been retained by Mr. Cottrell, who's standing to my right, and he has laid out to myself and Mr. Cottrell, and Mr. Cottrell's retained him, a, not a strategy, but an engineering approach to addressing the real physical issues that have arisen from an action that's been taken by my client on his own with, in total derogation of every application he should have met.
Mm-hmm.
And people do that, and this is where we are. But my thinking was, and my hope is, that, that if there's a way to physically mitigate the, 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 the issues at that site that have arisen, quite frankly, from its original geographic setting, as well as the actions of my client, that would then bring that site into compliance with the code, that we would be able to then come to this board and ask it for relief based on those approvals. So my thought was that, and I've shared these with, with counsel to the town, although it was, it was, it was not...
It's Michael, yeah.
Yeah, it was, it was Mr. Cunningham, not Mr. Wood, that Brian and Mr. Witt and, Mr. Witt, yes, no?
No.
Okay.
They made a, Mr. Stokosa made an appointment for Thursday morning at 9:30.
Yeah, Thursday morning or whatever, and they, they could look at this, and now if it conceptually would work, the way I see the hurdles, and where I would ask the board for its patience, or the board could dismiss the application, I guess, but it just seemed to me that I want an engineer in there with Mr. Witt. Mr. Witt's gonna issue the permit. Is there a way to make that site by removal of fill, by creation of drainage infrastructure, a site that will comply with the town's code? If that is possible, then he needs to, that would be Mr. Stokosa, needs to engineer it and, and get it and see if that permit works. If those permits work, then we go to the building inspector who will say, "Okay, you have those permits that you can fix and make them work, now here's what I need you to do as a building permit, and here's the relief you need from the, from the ZVA." And if those things do not work, we can't get here.
Okay.
So that's what we're trying to do.
There's a couple nuances to what you've said that I want to make sure you also understand. It's not just the impact on Mr. Cottrell's lot, but it's also the impacts on other lots that are downstream that are now getting more water in their yard.
I so clearly understand the impacts. This is a precipitous act on the part of a client who, quite frankly, naively...
Yeah, understood. We, we-
We know, I know.
We went there already, so we're good.
I know, we've spoken. There's a lot of money being spent here to remedy this rather than tear it down.
Right.
The remedy may not be available. This is not me asking for you to give us relief. It's me saying to you, I don't know that I can even frame the question for you to decide upon until those preliminary questions are decided. If Mr. Witt comes back and says, you know what, this cannot work no matter what, then we'll be someplace else. We won't be here. If he says it can work, then he's got to be, Mr. Cottrell's got to be willing to do what it takes and write the check to do it. I'm usually in here with folks who do this stuff for profit, asking for relief. That's not really the case.
Just to clarify the record, just so we, so the one, the first issue he has to address, which he is through me with Mr. Witt, is the implementation of the federal FEMA floodways.
Right.
Floodplain maps. This is federal regulations that the town is compelled to enforce-
Right.
-in order to protect everybody who needs to have flood insurance in the town. If we don't properly administer that, then people of the town would not be eligible for flood insurance. So once that permit is issued, that's separate and apart from the actions of this board, and then Mr. Stanger is asking, at that juncture, if they still require variances to keep, if the permit comes up with a method that would allow a structure to remain, he would then have to make his case to the zoning board under our zoning ordinance as to whether or not you would grant the various variances that might be needed. Because there are several buildings on the property, so those variances may be more than just what we-
We don't, I don't know the exact nature of those variances until we get through that process, and we may not even have to burden you with the proposition of making that decision if the engineering plan doesn't work. But as I understand it, and I clearly understand the purpose of the statute, as council has explained, look, my client took a step precipitously. He did it without considering the consequences of why this rule of law is in place. It's because there are other people who are getting water that should be on our land. I know that. We know that. If we can show a plan to the town where we can change that and change it practically, then a permit will issue. It's subject to the work being done, the remedial work being done. But if I can't get that far, then I won't even be here. It'll be another issue altogether.
I may just suggest that I think if the board might consider holding the application for 30 or 60 days to allow them to work with the floodplain administrator.
I would just ask for 60 days.
Yeah, I think 60 at this point. I, we-
Makes sense.
Let me explain. We haven't seen anything in months and months. It was important for this board to understand where you were at, because, not for nothing, but winter's right around the corner again. And so, you know, the neighbors who had contacted us, where they're trying to figure out why their property is flooding, you know, need to understand what the town's going to do to correct that.
This is a very understandable appearance here this evening. And I have to be quite honest with you, the, when I got the file in, I looked at this, and I'm trying to figure out how to deal with this.
Right.
And as you generally know, I argue that compliance isn't required. Compliance is required, but it took me a while to find somebody who would sit down and come up with a plan on how to address the issue of compliance, rather than someone sit there and say to me, wow, this is a problem.
Right.
So we have one now. You know Mr. Stokosa. He's retained to do the work.
Right. And in light of other comments the board heard this evening, it's refreshing to hear someone accepting that the rule of law prevails.
Well, it's, you know, it's a family tradition, Mr. Witt.
You're happy you came tonight, aren't you?
Yes, he is. He is. He gets a doubleheader tonight.
I do have one question, if you don't mind. Mr. Cottrell, you had represented us that you were going to move back into that home this summer. Have you done that yet or not yet?
I'm on a process. I'm waiting for the lease to expire.
Okay, you had represented us that that was in July, so there, it could very well be a couple more days. I'm not sure, so.
I'm hoping I'm working with a tenant. You know, you know how it is.
Okay, because I do want to tell you, I did drive by one Saturday, and there was a truck in the back, a large, large truck. It was a red truck. So I just, I know, you're telling him not to speak, and I'm not asking him to answer either.
Not at all. I'm here, this is a very different role for me.
Yeah.
All right. So all I just need to know is, if you would share with me the importance of that question. He should answer it. He should answer it honestly and tell you. I don't know what representations were made before I got here, but there is clearly an issue of import to the chairwoman.
Yes.
I would ask, only you tell me what it is.
No, that's fine. The issue is that we, one of the questions we wanted to ascertain was that there was not a business operating back there.
Got it.
And so the size of the truck did concern me about, it was, this is a couple months ago, okay? It was not recently. I have not, I'm, I'm not even answering, I'm just wanting to make sure we're getting it on the record and that your council understands. We are, we need to be sure that this is not for any kind of business operation. It would be for your personal vehicles. You represented to us, you did have a couple large ones. I just want to be clear that there will not be any-
Any commercial use.
Business commercial operation on that site at any point.
So I guess I can make this representation to you. I'm not getting involved in this case to bring exercising compliance to back to our-
That's fine.
... commercial use. My client and I will discuss it. If that is not in our building plans, we'll be done. This is entirely a residential use.
Yep.
Your concerns here are entirely well-directed. Thank you.
Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you. Well, so it's, we're not adjourning it, but what we'll ask is-
60 days, I'll be back.
Do we agree 60 days? So it's the end of September?
It's a review, so we can extend it to 60 days.
Well, this way he doesn't have to send a letter.
Right.
After the fact.
I mean, if something were to hap, I'm assuming that, I know that Brian and Rick will be meeting on Thursday, and they've been, you know, Brian's on our side, has been given a go-ahead to work and do what he has to do, and I am assuming, and I believe, I know, that similar instructions have been given to Mr. Witt. Look, if they have an answer within 30 days that says, we can do this and it'll work, even then, I'm not done. I have to get to-
Right.
I have to take that to Mr. Cronizer, who has to say, okay, in order to get here, you got to do that.
That's Mr. Cronizer.
That's Crona. Now you got.
Now you know.
But-
Okay, that's fine. So-
That's my thinking anyway. I'm not-
You want to bring it back on September 24?
If that's-
Because that's a, that's 60 days approximately.
But that's fine with the board. I think we would have something to report. There's no need for me to come and say, we're still working on it.
Correct.
If we're not working on it, I'll give you this promise, if we run into, I gave you this promise, if we run into a situation that we can't overcome, I'll tell the board.
Okay.
Because really, if we can't overcome it, the board won't have jurisdiction over the application, because there'll be no permit to be issued. And if no building permit can be issued, then the conditions or relief from any zoning conditions really aren't ripe.
Understood.
Well, and also, if the application isn't being progressed after 60 days, the 원막 state provision of the town law with respect to enforcement-
Done.
-would no longer be effective, so then enforcement action could be taken, so.
So that's, that's the deal.
I mean, that's all understood, and I think that as long as you're working in due diligence, good faith, we'll have plenty of patience, so.
All right, great. See you in 60 days.
See you in September.
Hopefully with an answer.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so there is no item 11 this evening. It was pulled as a request of the applicant, so we're up to item number 12, appeal 3912 Ramirez, Joseph Ramirez, 14 Fennor Court, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a variance to allow a 6-foot fence to be located in front of the dwelling pursuant to one, section 194-98 of the zoning ordinance. Joseph Ramirez, hi.
Good evening. Sorry. He apologizes for not being here. He couldn't get off of work.
That's fine, no problem.
I am his fiancee, and I do reside at the 14 Fennor location.
Okay.
If that's okay.
So this is the first time we're actually seeing his application. So if you don't mind, you prepared to-
We were here last month.
Were you?
Yes.
Hold on. I gotta look at this. Oh, yes, you were. This is Route 82 is your backyard.
Yes.
Okay. This was a cluster subdivision that was approved all-
Was this Clarenbridge?
Yes, approved way down on 82 there, so approved many, many years ago, where the idea was that lots were created to be smaller so that we could preserve open space, particularly along the Route 82 corridor there, but then also on the whole other side, so that it created more green, kept the area green and kept, the idea was to be able to, maybe hiking trails or something for people to be able to, the residents in particular, to be able to use some of that extra green space. The dilemma is that it actually limits the use of your fiancee's backyard.
Correct.
Okay, and so because of the noise from Route 82, he's actually asking to put a 6-foot fence, but in fact, what we have found out, it's not really a 6-foot fence, it's an elevated 6-foot fence, because he would just raise the posts and hang it higher on the posts. And so we had said to him, it's not allowed, because you can't block the easement, you can't block the open space easement there. So he was going to come back and tell us what he was going to do.
Okay, well, that, it's still, the proposal still stands, I believe, for the fence, to put the fence up. The issue was, there was a question of whether or not there was an actual conservation easement-
Right.
-in which he went and obtained all the deeds, and he has the map. What was obtained was that there was a proposed easement. It's not necessarily that it is a conservation easement. We contacted the lawyer and our agent who helped us find the property, and they, it never showed up in the title that there was an easement. So it was never brought to anyone's attention that this property had like this kind of limit for us to be able to put a fence in.
So your argument is that the easement was never recorded in the clerk's office?
Correct.
Well, that's interesting.
I think you're saying it was proposed.
It was a proposed easement.
But it's on a filed, the ref, it's on a filed map. The map that actually subdivided this property clearly shows that there's the open space, maybe we're calling it a buffer instead of an easement?
On the map, it says.
I do have the original deed from the original owners, and then I have our deed as well, including this, if you'd like. I can, we weren't able to drop it off at that time.
I would ask that you give it to the town attorney and let him review it.
Can you see up here? If you see, it says it very clearly up here. I don't know if you have this map or not.
Do you have, you have a survey of your property?
Yes.
Oh, look at this.
It says conservation easement. Oh, that's the map. That's the-
That's the whole map.
Yeah, it's the whole map. So, I don't, I know that the lot-
So you see how there's a buffer area? There's an area that's mapped off along Route 82 there that's-
Right, like these-
Yes.
Yeah, dash line, yeah. That's what you're talking about.
Right. So when we went to get the information, we were told the property is not on, or there is no conservation easement.
But that's the filed map.
Right. But it says proposed. Is that-
Okay, then that's not the filed map, sorry.
So then, but he did say that the map that is on file.
Okay.
Okay, hold on a second.
Meanwhile.
If you don't mind, it's going to take her a little bit of time to find that file. Do you mind if we move on to the next application, and then we'll come back to you?
Sure, no problem.
All right, just so that we're not making you-
And I can leave this paperwork if I can.
You can pass the paperwork on to the town attorney here, yes. Just carefully make your way around the table there. All right, so we're going to just kind of pull this review and go on to the next one, just to keep the meeting going here. My apologies ahead of time for how to pronounce this next name. All right, so item number 13, appeal 3918, or, sorry, three, yeah.
Kachani.
3916.
Gokachani?
And they're not here.
And they're not here, after all that?
After all that.
Vladimir Gokachani? Not here. Okay, let's go to item number 14, appeal 3918 Cronin. Patrick Cronin, 2109 Route 52, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a variance to allow the parking of commercial vehicles in a residential zone pursuant to section 194-52 of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening.
So, again, first time we're seeing your application, so you need to take us through what you're proposing to do here. So this is Cronin's Maple?
Maple Farm, yes. It's in Agricultural District 22. We produce maple syrup. I also have a tree business, which the, I park the tree equipment on the same lot.
Is that part of the Ag District?
We, yes.
It is. So if I look at your Ag District filing with, what, Dutchess County?
Yes.
I'll see that the tree business is part of the-
Well, the tree business's equipment is used for the farming operation as well as the tree business. The other issue is that I was granted a permit, excuse me?
I mean, I may get it wrong, but I don't think you answered the question. The question was whether the tree business is on the Ag District.
Application and approved by the Dutchess County Board of Legislators.
There's, no, there's no-
There is. You would have had to, to be in an Ag District, you would have had to-
It's a farming operation. That's what you apply for, to have the farming operation.
And I think your approval was for Maple Syrup Farm.
Correct.
Right. Because if you recall, eight, 10 years ago, we went through a situation where it was the town's contention that you had too many logs stored on the property, and you represented that you were in the Agriculture District, which you were, and after some back and forth with the State Department of Agriculture, it was determined that you could have a reasonable amount of wood there for use to keep the furnace or whatever used in the maple syrup.
Yeah, we use the wood for heating.
Correct.
We sell wood-
Right.
-as part of the farming operation, which is permitted, and-
However, the equipment is really part of an off-site tree cutting and repair bus, or repair, tree removal. It's, it's not used on a parcel of property that's part of the farm to cut wood to be used on the farm. So this is something that's-
It is.
You're cutting wood on the farm?
We, we, we cut, we process the wood that we use.
Not process, sorry. You cut the trees on the farm property?
No. We bring, we bring in logs.
You're importing the trees from other, you're importing trees, whatever word you want to do. You're bringing in trees cut from other locations.
We do. But there's, there's also another issue here that I was granted a permit, I believe it was 2000, you probably can verify this, to build a shop. When I came in, I spoke to Jack Newbauer, sat down across from him. I said, I have a tree business, this was before I was even running the maple operation. I have a tree business. I want to build a shop to keep my equipment and service my equipment, and the permit was granted. And I've been-
You got, so you got a permit to do a commercial operation?
A garage.
Got a permit to build the building.
A garage, yeah.
And the purpose of the building was for, to park and service the commercial vehicles that I use in the tree operation.
Is that what the building is being used for now?
And the building inspector was fully aware of what I was doing, and the-
The permit said it was to build a garage, and at that time, there were no limitations on the size of the garages. That's how we ended up with something.
And it's been in existence since 2000.
Do you own all of this property, or is part of the property rented? What are we, what we're talking about?
The property that is in question, I own.
Okay.
I lease other properties as part of the farm operation. We have approximately 200 acres leased. Where we cut trees, we bring back, we tap the trees and bring the sap back and process it on this, the property in question.
Okay.
So are you representing that, for the 200 acres, they're not contiguous-
To this property.
Parcels, right?
They are not.
So are you representing that all the trees that come into there are solely from-
No, I'm not.
Okay.
Is there an outdoor furnace on this?
Yes.
Does the furnace have a permit?
No, wasn't.
Is there a pool on this property?
There is.
Does the pool have a permit?
The pool, the permit is, I'm applying for a permit for the pool.
Is the pool operational?
Yes. The pool's been in existence for quite some time. We've been back, I've been back and forth with Mr. Cronizer a couple times. I was, I was thinking a few years back about selling the property, and I explained to Mr. Cronizer that if the property was to be, was sold, and the new owners didn't want the pool, it was going to be removed. If they did want the pool, I would apply for the permit. I decided not to sell the property. I've, the pool didn't have, meet the, all the codes, so I'm in the process of bringing it up to code, and I will be in to apply for a permit for that.
How many, how many years ago was that, that you were speaking to Mr. Cronizer?
It was, what, two years ago, Rick? Started before I started here. What's that?
No, just the pool.
Pool's been there long. No, the pool has been there long. He's asking when the conversation took place. Oh, we had a conversation last year about that. Okay.
Do you have a copy of your Ag District application?
Yeah.
Okay. I think, Janie, can, we're going to make a request that you contact Dutchess County and get a copy of the official application for the Ag District for what the uses are, because I think it's important to make sure that we're consistent with what is being allowed there, what, you know, the understood farming operations are. If it's on there, then-
Well, apart from that, I've, as I explained, I've, I was granted a permit to build a building to do what I'm doing.
But that's not, I'm not understanding how that goes to parking commercial vehicles there.
Because I've been parking the commercial vehicles there for almost 20 years.
Just because you've been doing it doesn't mean it's right, okay? We've had that argument brought in by other property owners, and, sorry, but that's not how the town operates.
Well, the town granted the permit to build the building to operate, to service and park commercial vehicles.
To service commercial vehicles?
It's a shop. I sat across from Mr. Newbauer and said, I want to build a shop to work on my equipment and trucks and park my trucks inside in the wintertime.
So you got a permit to build a garage, to park your trucks there, and to service them. So your contention is, there's nothing illegal about it, because I already had a permit to do that when I built the garage?
Yes.
You may have had a permit to put a building, which you represented. That doesn't necessarily mean that it was approved for that purpose. You may have explained that.
Okay, but-
There's a distinction here that's important. And also, your application goes beyond that. You're asking that there be additional vehicles that you're parking outside, so I'm not sure whether your uses remain consistent.
The other issue is that all of this equipment in question is used in the farming operation.
Okay, I'm going to read into the record, the, the building department record, because there's a complaint that was, goes back to 2006 related to commercial vehicles on the property. So 1010, 2006, complaint 06-24. All commercial operations conducted by Tree Man Services, Inc., at 2077 Route 52, tax parcel with the ID number, owned by Park Page Associates, must cease immediately. Property is not zoned for commercial usage. No site plan from Town Planning Board on file for any commercial operations on said property. Stop work order based on violation of town code. Conformance required by 130, 2007. Inspection showed no work on the property. Sorry, this is on, on January 30, 2007, there was follow-up. And so there were, inspection showed there was no work on the property. Jason Page contacted and advised to have Tree Man Services remove processed wood and machinery. Mr. Page did receive copy of stop work order, and then on February 12, 2007, spoke to Mr. Cronin, who was advised about OR, what's-
Remedy.
What, Order of Remedy? Okay. Sent to Page property. Mr. Cronin stated that he will remove the- Mr. Cronin stated that he will remove the trucks off of the property. Mr. Cronin has an appointment with his attorney on February twenty-second, two thousand and seven. So, back in two thousand and seven, you were agreeing that you.
That, that wasn't my property, that was Page's property.
And is that part of the property we're talking about now?
No.
Oh. It's, so you, you're not, two one oh nine, Route fifty-two, or two zero seven seven, Route fifty-two, which is the?
I'm two one oh nine. I had what was granted permission by Page Park Associates to store logs and process firewood on their property, and there was a complaint, and it was all removed from Page Park Associates' property to my property, and following that, there was no issue.
Okay, then there was another complaint in two thousand and nineteen. Addition to garage permit has expired without their certificate of compliance?
That's been resolved.
Garage being used for maple syrup, so you were using a garage at the time that would, had, did not have a closed-out permit. And then on eight, on March twenty-second, the addition, the seven hundred and twenty square foot addition to the existing garage plans and plot plan attached, received electrical. Okay, so it must've gotten the electrical inspection then. Okay, so it says issued, it doesn't say, it says open and issued for those last two items there. Okay, um, I think we need some, a little bit more guidance and information, right?
I think we have to get the agricultural approval into a Building Department file, sir.
Yeah. All right, so I think, is there anything we need Mr. Cronin to do at this point, or is this all?
I think it's all we can.
Yeah, I think, I, I think the board needs to have staff do some work for us to be able to understand what you're allowed. If you're allowed, then I think you go away, but right now, we need to understand what Dutchess County understands, what your application was for, what's been approved for use there, for us to have a better understanding before we can move on this, all right?
Is there a, a limit to how much equipment a farm can have on it?
What? I don't know.
We're gonna have to look at it. How many acres do you have?
Where the oper, where the maple syrup is, is processed and the firewood is processed, and the whole operation is one point six two acres.
So, yes, there's, there's gonna be a limit on how many vehicles, not how many vehicles a farm can have necessarily, but how many vehicle, vehicles you can put on that one point six acre, yes. There's certainly requirements in how much property, how much coverage you can have on a property.
And where, where would I, is there a, a law number that I can reference?
On how much development you can do on a piece of property. What he's referring to is in the zoning ordinance is a, a lot coverage limitation.
Right.
And you're only allowed, if it were commercial, you're only allowed to use a certain percentage of the total lot coverage.
Okay.
I don't know the percentage, it's, it's in the zoning ordinance.
Okay, but it's not commercial.
Any area, like if you have a parking area, garage, anything that's used.
Right.
Is, is used in that calculation to come up with a percentage.
But that's for commercial?
If it were commercial.
If it were commercial.
You're residential, so the only way you can have a quote "commercial" type use is if it's part of the agricultural district farm.
Right.
Because as we know under the agricultural law, local zoning has to give way to farming.
Right.
But I think the question is, the biggest question that will come down is, is the commercial tree service bringing in wood from another site a part of your farming approval, your agricultural approval?
Right.
Okay, and if I, if, if I wasn't, where would I, it's fuel. Everybody buys fuel, you buy gas, you buy oil.
You'd be allowed for the size of your operation, just like the, I can't think of the gentleman's name at the Department of Agriculture that we dealt with before.
Bob Summers. Bob Summers?
Yes, Bob Summers. He agreed that you were allowed to have a reasonable amount of wood on the site to use in the maple syrup process.
Right.
And.
What I have on site at this time is approximately, uh.
Well, I mean, but I'm just saying at the time.
Right.
That's how we resolved and got the excess materials out. But we never had a discussion, that I recollect at that time, about the vehicles.
But the excess material, Tom, was on the pro, the adjacent property, it wasn't on mine. There wasn't an issue at that time with that.
Maybe that's why we didn't have that discussion, right? And this is an issue that the town's gonna have to address, 'cause you have several.
Right.
Parcels of property throughout the town that have an ag result, and it's getting more difficult for commercial tree cutters and other commercial.
Right.
People with trucks to find places to store their vehicles. So, there had been some thought that we have to revisit it and come up with a special permit in an agricultural district, but that hasn't been progressed yet, so.
Okay.
Yeah. There may be other ways that this can be resolved, it may not be.
Right, so it.
I'm aware, thank you.
Understand, this is more, it's, we're looking at your application, but the decision that's what it makes may impact additional properties in town. That's why we're gonna make sure we're crossing our Ts and dotting our Is and just.
I get it.
Understanding what we're looking at, all right? So, we need to do some work. We'll see you next month.
Okay, twenty-seventh?
Twenty-seventh, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna go back to Fennor Court. So, we got the filed map, and?
Yes, we have two interesting pieces of information.
Okay.
First of all, the deeds that you gave us, and I'll give them back to you, but it goes back to property owners, goes three deeds in the chain of title, conveying Lot thirty-two. On the filed map, there are two Lot thirty-twos.
Okay.
Okay?
First issue.
And there's no Lot thirty-four listed, and the property owner, well, I'm sorry, it's the other way around, the deeds convey Lot thirty-four, there's no Lot thirty-four on the map, but there are two Lot thirty-twos, so the one that they own is improperly listed on the filed map as Lot thirty-two. So, that might be a title issue that their title company's gonna have to figure out how to address. But secondly, the actual filed map, which was filed with the county clerk, shows the easement area. The legend does refer to his proposed, but it's clearly delineated on the map, and obviously, anyone who requires property is subject to all of the notes, renderings, and indications on the filed map. So, it would appear that that is part of the conservation area. So, you, one problem that's come up is he's gonna have to figure out some way to correct that the deed is for Lot thirty-four, but there's no Lot thirty-four on the map.
Okay.
There's two Lot thirty-twos, and I think we can figure out which lot is the lot intended, so that would be something your title company.
So, is that why when upon purchase, it was never mentioned, um, when the title search was done?
Well, it, these, um, what happens is, it's not just you, but hundreds of people, and I think anyone that has handled real estate, all of the restrictions on a piece of property are not set forth in someone's deed all the time. Some of the older conveyances do carry forth the covenants and restrictions that are on. But when there's a filed map, as there is here, filed with the county clerk, any notes on it are binding on the property owners for any property that's on it. So, if someone did not explain that to you at the closing, that's an issue, but as far as legally, these are all enforceable against the property.
Okay. So, it does limit your ability to be able to put up a fence.
So, I'll give you these.
You can still put up a fence, a six-foot fence, not an eight-foot or seven-foot, whatever, a six-foot fence, but it would be limited to the inside border of that easement, which is probably not, gonna give you a lot of backyard.
Yeah, the application says it's two foot.
I'll give you back your deed.
Yeah, you can come get your paperwork back. Thank you for bringing that.
It was on the map itself, it shows two Lots thirty-two.
You wanna see the map, so you can.
Yeah, but this demand, a copy what's filed with the county clerk, it's thirty-two and thirty-three.
Oh, that's okay.
That's their location. See, so this is your lot, which your deed says Lot thirty-four, and it looks like it would be Thirty-two, Thirty-three. You know, but that's not correct, so. Give as much back.
Thank you. So, again, it's gonna go back to, do you wanna withdraw the application? You, you asked your fiancee if he could send a letter in with what his wishes.
Yeah, I think he would rather keep it open for now until we further look into it. We'll have to make some phone calls, so maybe we'll be back on the twenty-seventh date.
That's fine.
If that changes, he'll write the letter.
Thank you.
My question was if it says proposed, aren't, aren't they supposed to actually go to the next step? Because proposed basically means that they're thinking about it, but it doesn't say that it was actually followed through.
Except that it's a filed map.
But it's on the filed map as the conservation easement.
I mean, is this a note with the proposed on it?
Well.
You might've been on the board at the time. I know, I signed the map, so I'm, I'm guilty too, you know, that we didn't catch that wrong number.
Wrong word, but yeah, I, again, I mean, it shows a conservation easement there. I mean, that's where it was proposed, and that's now where it is.
Right.
I was just gonna mix up with the lot numbers, two thirty-twos.
Well.
That's different.
That, that's gonna be a different issue, but the, the, again, the idea of the whole cluster subdivision was to create smaller lots to keep as much green space as we could, so. All right, so have a discussion with your fiancee, and we'll see you on the twenty-seventh, or we'll get a letter in the meantime.
Okay.
All right?
All right.
Have a good night, Eve.
Thank you.
Good night.
Okay, so going once more, I don't think I saw anybody else come in, but is Vladimir Gocch, Gocchiani present? Seeing not, um, Jeannie, we're gonna ask you to reach out to him and make sure he understands about being here. Filed, I just wanna write notes on that last one, okay. So, we have two applications remaining. So, we have number fifteen, which is Appeal three nine one nine, Deanna, Edward Deanna, to New Hard Place, Hopple Junction, requesting a two-foot variance for our proposed six-foot fence to be located in the front yard, a twenty-five-foot front yard variance for our proposed twenty-five-foot by thirty-foot detached garage to be located in the front yard, and a variance to allow an existing ten-foot by fourteen-foot shed to remain in the front yard pursuant to section ninety-one, section one ninety-four dash ninety-nine, one ninety-four dash one oh seven C, and one ninety-four dash one oh seven B three of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening, ma'am.
So, again, first time we're seeing your application. Are you a new owner of this property?
Uh, three years this December.
Okay, 'cause I was actually watching all those trees get cut down week by week, and was wondering, and then all of a sudden, this shed just showed up, because the trees were hiding it before. So, yeah, so I was wondering when we were gonna see you on this. So, you have a corner lot, okay?
Yes.
You're in the corner of New Hard and Old Hopple Road, right? Um, and so, as, because of that, you have frontage, you have two front yards. Even though your house will face onto New Hard.
Yes.
You do have two front yards, similar to one of the situations we saw before, which means that no structures should be beyond that front of the building, that side of the building there. Um, so yes, that shed was definitely, so even though it meets probably, you know, meets a setback variance, which in this case, Old Hopple Road is a county road, so it would be at least a hundred feet back.
Yes.
So, but because it's that front yard issue, that's why you're here. Um, are you, tell us what you're planning to do there, because are you gonna put a fence up, screening up, what are you actually?
Yes, well, there was an existing fence.
Right.
In the back, it was a wooden fence, and just over the years, the post rotted, and this past March, April, one of the windstorms we had
took it out.
Started blowing it down. So, I braced it up to finish up the work on the property, so I can get someone to come in and put a new fence in. So, I had gone to the Building Department and looked into what I needed to do for a fence, and went through the whole process, brought in the application, and I went over to speak with the zoning department and was bringing up the question about possibly putting a garage on the property as well.
Okay.
Um, while I was over there, the lady in the Building Department noticed that I was a corner lot, and as we were having a discussion about the corner lot, raised the question of the fence being in the front yard on the Old Hopple frontage.
Mm-hmm.
If you look at the, um, survey of my property from when I had purchased the house, the fence that is outlined in, around the pool in the back, for all intents and purposes, the backyard on the rear of my house, that was existing, that is what came down. So, I had drawn out the proposed fence line.
Okay.
That I was looking to do. So, while it's still in the front yard, it does extend a little bit, because I was looking to provide, um, a backyard area for both my dog and my son to play in, a safe, protected area, where previously, the area around the pool was just closest to the house patio, and behind the pool was just like a small garden area.
Is that shed still there in the side yard, in that front yard too?
Yes.
That shed needs a variance, 'cause that's in the front yard too.
Right, we had looked into that, and, um, correct me if I'm wrong, ma'am, but there was a CFC issue for a shed. There was just no variance.
But it still needs a, yeah, it still needs a variance.
Right, and that's, that's part of the conversation tonight, so looking to remedy.
Oh, okay, it's in there, sorry.
Yeah.
It is in there. Okay. So, again, the way the lot was before, with all that vegetation on there, nobody noticed the, that, the, that, um, the fence, the shed, all that was there. So, it's because all the vegetation's come down.
Right, no, I understand.
What are you proposing to put back there?
Obviously, I cleared, and what I'm looking to do is, I'm planning on doing some evergreen landscape buffer.
Okay.
Along Old Hopple Road.
Okay.
Um, not extending too far towards New Hard. Um, it would meet all the zoning requirements and whatever I need to meet to make that right.
Okay.
Um, so I'm looking to put some landscape buffer to basically re- buffer the Old Hopple Road corridor portion of the lot, and plant some trees, you know, landscaping in the front yard and the side yard and.
Can you give us a landscape plan, so we can?
I suppose I could work on that.
I, I'm not saying, yeah, I mean, you're gonna take your survey and plot out.
Right, mm, no, I understand.
Approximately how many evergreens, what it is that you're talking about.
Right.
I mean, by giving yourself that ever, that buffer there, you're actually creating a more usable yard there, honestly. Um, it would provide some safety for your son to not wander into the road, that sort of thing, not that, you know, he wouldn't, couldn't go between trees. Why is this garage out in, out in the middle of nowhere? It's not, are you proposing another driveway to it, how are you gonna get to it, to even use it?
Through the yard. As of right now, the plan is to utilize it as more or less a big shed. But because of, it would have a concrete floor, it would make it a garage.
A twenty-five-foot by thirty-foot?
Storage facility.
Right, I have, I have a sixty-one Corvette that I store. Right now, I have like.
So, you're gonna store a motor vehicle in it, it is a garage?
Right. So, right now, I have a true two-car garage, and like, I have a pickup truck, it doesn't fit in there. Uh, my wife's SUV does fit in there, so the garage on the house would be used for, you know, her car and like, my son's toys and, you know, garage stuff.
You get relegated to the.
No, I was just gonna say smart man, but.
Yeah.
So, and I was gonna utilize the, the proposed garage for the Corvette, you know, outdoor equipment storage, my lawnmower, you know, my yard stuff, you know, patio furniture, stuff along those lines.
Why can't you move it up? Why is, why, I guess I'm trying to, why is it so far back? Why can't you move it closer to the house? It's just gonna look strange being out in the middle of the yard there like that.
Where, where are you looking to possibly put, almost like kinda where the shed is, in that general vicinity?
That would be my first suggestion, would be to move, actually move the shed back, so it becomes a more backyard function?
Shed, one of the things I was gonna bring up also is because of the, the nonconformance with no variance for the shed that was pre-existing, was if part of the remedy and putting in, like, say, that garage would be to remove that shed, then that would be something I would gladly, you know, consider and do.
So, you were proposing to put this twenty-five-foot by thirty-foot garage adjacent or next to your dwelling, or near the existing garage, so that you have a clear, you know, you'd have multiple, I mean, like, three, three-car garage or, or, you know, next to your existing garage, is that what you're proposing maybe?
So, would you move the garage up then? You, you, you mentioned if, if we needed to see some mitigation, that you might take down the shed.
Right.
It's not your preference, obviously. If you did take down the shed, or if, even if you moved it back, could you move the garage forward and put it closer to the house? Is there some reason you don't want it attached to the house, or? I don't know where your septic is, where your well is, you may have.
Right, my, my septic is.
Physical constraints on the property that don't let you do that, but I, my recollection of the property is that it's pretty flat.
Yes.
Yeah, so, and why not move it up to the house?
Um, I just thought it was gonna be too cluttered, and having the shed there, um, at, when I was going through this process, I don't, didn't have enough time to process, you know, maybe removing the shed and putting the garage there, um, without having some time to think about it, you know, aesthetically, how would it look?
And off the corner of your house, you have a, what, a small deck there, or does it go alongside? And off the corner of your house, you have a, what, a small deck there, or does it go alongside the house?
Um, I honestly don't know why that is labeled deck from the surveyor. Um, right there, it almost looks like they had, um, like a spa platform
Yeah, okay.
that's there. It's a wooden square.
Oh, so it's like, uh-
So, I don't know if it was that, or if they just had that there, and then they put like a, um, like an outdoor patio set on there.
Okay.
So I, I don't know exactly what the use was prior to.
Like a, like a ten by ten platform?
I would say it's about ten by ten, yeah.
I think honestly, the bigger issue we have, Tom, is that a structure is not, a garage is not supposed to be, an unattached garage is not supposed to be in front of the, front of a house.
Right.
So it's in the front yard, so. Yeah, so it's not, technically, you're, this, what you're asking for isn't even allowed, so it's not, that's why I'm asking about attaching it.
Yeah, that's why I was asking about the deck and where the deck was, whether, I don't know what kind of windows and stuff you had on that side, whether you could put another garage off the side of your house, and, look, it has to be attached, doesn't have to be completely built along the side.
Yeah.
Right.
It has to be attached in some way.
Okay.
And you can put it right alongside your house there and.
You can connect a breezeway. We had another applicant before who actually just put a little breezeway, so they could still get through the structure.
And that setback is gonna have to be fifty feet. You're showing twenty-five, was that part of the variance required, asked for, right, for the front, the garage?
Yeah, the fifty-foot front yard, but that's state road, it's a hundred feet.
A hundred feet.
It's a county road. That, so the buffer for the garage has to be a hundred feet.
So the house doesn't even meet that setback requirement though either.
'Cause the property's only a hundred fifty feet wide.
You know.
Well, the more reason you should attach it to the house.
Or you go alongside the other garage. I mean, there's different ways. I don't know what would be pleasing architecturally, what you could do.
I think my biggest concern with making the existing garage that's attached to the house larger
Is it's a hundred feet off the county road.
While it shows it's delineated there, um, the roof line is all the same, so just without looking into it.
I mean, slopes down from the high part of the-
Um, no, it's actually, um, if you're looking at the front of the house, if you're standing, like, in the middle of my front yard, the roof pitch is this way, and that runs straight back to the rear of the house. So, the garage and the living room of my home is all common trust, um,
That's what I'm saying.
attic space. So as far as re-engineering that, um, without looking into it entirely.
You couldn't do something that matches, or maybe where the shed is now, I don't know, I don't know what windows you'd be blocking there, or what, so.
Do you have an architect on, are you working with an architect to do this or?
No, yeah, this was just looking for-
I know, you're sketching it out right now.
Right, just that.
They, 'cause they might come up with some creative solutions for you.
And they'll know the setbacks for a county road also, so they, so we'll keep the-
But obviously, no matter where he builds, he's gonna need a variance.
But attaching it to my house would reduce the setback even more, on, if I, if I were to go in the area where the shed is, attaching it there would bring it even closer to Old Hopple Road.
Not from where it is in the back. You're only twenty-five feet away in the back, where you've drawn it back there?
Well, just where the shed is, you, 'cause you're saying move it up.
Oh, yeah, I'm saying, I'm just saying, move the shed back a little bit if you want, along the fence or the pool, or something like that.
Further away from Old Hopple Road.
Move it away from-
Not further away, further away from New Hard. I'm saying push it back.
Well, again, he has to access the cars, I mean, so that's why.
What I'm suggesting is move the garage forward, but move the shed back.
Oh, okay, so what the chair is suggesting is to, um, move the garage where the shed is, and move the shed
Move the shed back.
towards the deck.
You can keep the shed, I'm not, I'm just, I'm telling you, when those trees came down and the fence, you know, that shed became very, very visible.
Right.
And it was, so.
It's right there.
It is, it's right there. That's why, that's why screening's gonna be important there, it, it's.
So if you move your proposed gigantic garage near the shed area, and then move the shed, adjust, 'cause shed is smaller, so you can adjust it.
Right, and if I may, I wouldn't call it a gigantic garage.
No, it's twenty-five by thirty feet, I mean, it's, it's pretty big.
Standard-sized garage.
I would say it's a standard two-car garage.
Twenty-four, like twenty-four is a standard.
I think gigantic is a misrepresentation, personally.
Yeah, it's compared to the shed, I mean.
Do we know what the footprint of his house is, or no?
It's on there.
Sixteen fifty, he brought on the phone.
Yeah.
Sixteen hundred fifty square feet.
That's the footprint though, not the whole house square footage.
Correct.
Okay.
And I scaled it, so, if it's not to the inch, I apologize, I scaled it with a scale ruler quickly, just to do rough numbers.
Okay.
So I think the, the proposed garage being twenty-five by thirty was roughly like forty-two, forty-five percent.
Okay.
Um, so I was trying to keep it within reason, you know, under the seven hundred fifty square feet, and also the sixty percent of the existing.
I'm just concerned that that garage out in the middle of nowhere is just gonna-
No, I understand, and that's, that's why I wanna-
And you do, you, we're not gonna be aware, but we had a, an application two years ago maybe, from an, somebody else, further down on Old Hopple Road, that we did deny their shed in the front yard. So.
No, I under, I understand, that's why-
We have to be really careful about, you know, what we'd be looking at here and why. In your case, the shed's existing already, was that you put it there, but the garage that you're proposing is
Right.
It's difficult.
You've got other options, so that's why I don't see why.
That was the original place that.
That the garage was?
That myself and-
No, I'm asking about the garage.
Right, that my family and I had discussed, and that's where we were looking to put it.
That's where you liked it.
That's, that's why we put it down there, and here we are. So, I, I will look at the property and consider possibly moving it, um, closer to the northeast corner, towards where the compass is laid there. Is that where you were talking about? Moving it away from Old Hopple Road?
Well, no.
Almost on like the backside of the fence?
I think what the chair was suggesting was that your, if you can see what I'm looking, your garage, go there, and then you move the shed just back that way. If you wanna move your old garage back there, I don't, which side did it to, was that?
Back where, behind the pool?
Yeah, I don't know.
I mean, at that point, it would be in a rear yard.
Yeah.
So, the conversation would be different. But I will consider both, um, you know.
And again, if it's attached, it makes it easier for us.
Right.
'Cause you're not supposed to have a detached garage in the front yard at all, so if it's banned by the statute, you have a problem.
So it really doesn't, I, I understand your point. You want it there 'cause it looks good there, and that's your house, and that's how you want it, but can't be there.
No, I understand.
Yeah.
Right.
So I guess the, the board has just kinda given you different alternatives.
Okay, I appreciate it. Um, but the, the main purpose of being here is the fence.
So we can forget about everything else?
But until you resolve the garage, where you're thinking of putting the garage, are you sure you, I mean, you don't want us to move to get forward with just one piece of this?
I have to put a fence up, because the pool's operational, you know, the fence blew down, the, the fence surrounding the pool.
So for safety reasons, you have to get that fence up.
For safety reasons, I have to put the fence in.
No, I understand. The question is, does he have any merit by the fact that the fence was there before, if he puts it in the same location? And then we just call it an existing fence.
It was probably there when the pool was.
Right, was it?
He wants to make it bigger, he want a bigger backyard. That's why he's before.
So I can, you know, put a swing set in for the
Sure.
kid and, you know, have family over, be in the fenced-in backyard. So it's not, it wouldn't follow the existing.
What color fence are you talking, how many feet of fence are we looking at?
Um, it is roughly three hundred and twenty-six total feet.
Total, that goes on the four sides.
Yes, with two four-foot walk gates and a ten-foot double drive gate, um, eastern V three hundred, six-foot white vinyl privacy fence, new England.
Is it a hundred and twenty-six feet in all on the one side here?
Yes, on that one side, it's a hundred and twenty-six.
So again, part of what we're gonna ask is, are you proposing any landscaping on the outside of this fence, so that?
I'm proposing the landscaping.
Landscaping along the, landscaping along the road.
Along Old Hopple Road.
Yeah, that's gonna be critical to see that, 'cause.
Yeah, so no one's gonna see the fence anyway. No one's gonna see your property.
Well, they may see it between the trees.
Well, they'll see it at the front, and, right, because the way the house is angled on approach from the west, you would most likely see, you know, the fence.
But for the most part, your per, most of your perimeter is gonna be done with evergreens.
Yes.
Well, certainly, if, if it's just gonna be the fence, we could put you on for a public hearing next week. If you wanted us to get into garage, we'd probably wanna review the whole thing again next month.
Is that segmentation?
You can always just take care of the fence and, and the shed, and come back on the garage.
Right, that's, that's what I would like to do. I, you know, take care of the fence, um, the shed as existing, and I will revisit the garage aspect at another point in time.
I think we're drawing your, your, your request for the garage, basically.
Oh, well, that's different, okay. Are you gonna withdraw your application? My question with Tom was, is this segmentation then, if he's now looking to go forward with only one piece of this?
No, I was saying he had to withdraw the garage.
Yeah, you'd have to withdraw, but, but we know he's likely to come back in within the next five years with it.
Right.
But that's fine, as long as he gets his funds.
We're not, there's no point to put it on hold for five years if it's just resubmitted an application.
For seeker, that's segmentation. You can't split up environmental, your review of-
Well, except it's type two, so there's nothing to be worried about.
Oh, okay, good. That's all right, that, see, that's why Tom's here. That's why we have to, okay, that helps.
Yeah, it's, yeah. And it's two, really, two different applications, so.
Correct, exactly.
Well, technically, three.
Oh, we do have pictures, by the way.
The fence, fence, the shed, and then the garage, correct?
So, if you wanna withdraw, we could put you on for a public hearing for your shed and your fence next month.
I would appreciate that.
Okay, so basically, you wanna, so you just wanna go forward with the existing shed
Shed and the fence.
and the proposed fence.
Yes.
And that's-
But you're gonna give us a landscape plan.
I can get that to you.
Because to keep that shed there, and it's, you're now gonna put a hundred and twenty-six feet of fence, we're gonna need a landscape plan.
Okay.
Okay, your neighbors are gonna wanna
Okay, and you're-
likely see that.
So, so, motion to advertise as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So Jeannie, are you clear on?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Jeannie will give you your instructions for your sign, 'cause, and you're gonna need to put up two signs. Do you have those instructions or no?
Yeah.
Okay, you're gonna need to put up two signs, because noticing your neighbors, because you have one on, you have two front yards.
Right.
All right, so, um, Jeannie?
One on Old Hopple and one on New Hard.
Yes.
And then we'll see you next month for this piece of it. If you talk to any of your neighbors in the meantime, that would be helpful.
Yeah, no, I've, I've been in constant communication with my neighbors, so.
Nope, that's, that's good, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
If you don't mind, Tom, if you can pass those on to Jeannie. Those are Rick's reports on those properties. Okay, so, last but not least, um, we have Appeal three nine two zero, Floris Corp., Floris Corp., um, fifteen sixty-three Route eighty-two, Hopple Junction is requesting to amend the special use permit in order to allow twenty-four-hour operation of their gasoline filling station pursuant to section one ninety-four dash eighty-five of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening. Um, my name is Craig Bumgarner, and, uh, I'm the attorney who represents Floris Corp. in connection with this application, uh, which is brought before you in order to request that their hours of operation be expanded. Um, the property that is the subject of this application is located at fifteen sixty-three Route eighty-two. Um, it currently consists of a convenience store and a gasoline, um, filling station. And, um, it's operating at those premises, uh, which are in the, uh, B one general business district pursuant to a special permit that was issued by this board back in nineteen ninety-nine. So when my client originally made the application and came before the board for its special permit, um, there was some discussion with some neighbors surrounding the site regarding the hours of operation. As a result of that, my client, um, agreed to limit its operations, basically closed down at midnight every evening, opened back up at five o'clock in the morning, you know, following. So, my client got there, they opened up. After a few months, there were a lot of customers that were asking for them to be open, you know, twenty-four hours. Um, I think there was a petition at some point submitted to the town that contains over a thousand signatures to it. As a result of that, my clients did apply in, I guess, two thousand and one, uh, to come back and try to amend its special permit. Um, and at that time, the board was of the opinion that, you know, there was not a significant change in circumstances, uh, that would warrant changing those hours of operation. Um, so, fast forward now to two thousand and nineteen, um, you know, my client has a number of gasoline stations and convenience marts, um, what used to be very slow times for them, meaning late, you know, late evening or late night and, and early morning, um, are no longer that way. I mean, they find that, um, they're busy all the time. Not sure if that's just a function of more commuter traffic in the area, if it's, you know, the, the go-go-go society that we're living in, but, you know, they are running at their other locations twenty-four-seven and, and busy all those times. Um, and so, you know, that's one of the issues that they feel, um, is a change of circumstances which would merit their, uh, or, you know, some consideration for an amendment to their special use permit. Um, in addition to that, I don't know if this board would be aware or not, but there is a, uh, an application that was just recently approved for, um, another station, about eight, eight hundred feet down the road. Um, now, that station did not require, didn't require the special permit, didn't come before your board for approval, but it's our understanding that that station is going to be open twenty-four hours, seven days a week. Um, so, you know, obviously, our concern there is gasoline stations, I don't know if you guys are this way, but I know I am. I get my gas at the same place, I get my, you know, milk at the same place, people are creatures of habit. Um, and one of our concerns, obviously, is that somebody who is going out and using this other station, uh, for the fills in, in between those hours, now becomes their customer and is, is going to hurt our business. Um, you know, I think it certainly would be tough to argue that there's any sort of, you know, that we're going to have a negative impact on the, on the, on the neighborhood, when in fact, this other station is going to be operating twenty-four-seven, and it's really just don't throw away from us. Uh, so, what, what we would like the board to do is consider our request to, um, expand our hours of operation. As I say, the, the prior time that we were here in two thousand and one, it was some five and a half months after our initial approval. And I don't know if you guys see the minutes from those meetings, but at the time, um, the chairman, I believe it was, uh, Mike Tompkins at the time, said, you know, you guys were back, just got this approval five and a half months ago, what, what could have possibly changed, you know, but now, we're talking, you know, eighteen years difference, um, very different customer trends that we see in our business, uh, in terms of people coming in at, at those late hours. And again, um, a lot of this is competition too. We have to be able to compete with, you know, our new neighbor that's going to be there operating a, 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 uh, very similar type of operation, convenience store and gasoline station, and the best way to do that is to be open all the time and servicing the customers when they need it.
Okay, couple observations and comments. Your, where this station is, okay, is very much in a residential area. There's residences immediately behind it across the street. The other property that was recently approved is not surrounded by residential uses. It is commercial uses over in that area. So there is a distinct difference there. That said, I am certainly a user of the Taconic Parkway and of late hours, because I get dragged to meetings at all hours, so finding gas at night is certainly a convenience, I recognize that. I'd actually like to ask a couple of questions, because I am understanding that you have been operating, your client has been operating for, with the twenty-four-hour service. So I'm really curious as to what you were seeing. Were, was it more that the morning hours, people are leaving their homes early, and they're just looking for that service in the morning? Was it really after midnight that they're looking for? What, where was the extra service in the time that you were operating? 'Cause we, we know it was a, we was operating, you have a sign on your door that says, due to the zoning, that you're not, you know, that you're not allowed to do it anymore, but I wish that sign was not there. I'll, I'll let you know that, 'cause it's not accurate. Um, and so, um, I'm really curious as to where was the greater need, so that perhaps we can amend, maybe not complete twenty-four-hour service, but maybe give you an extra hour or two in the morning, if that's what it is, or an extra hour or two at night. But that said, I do have to advise the board that my understanding is because it did come once before to the board and was denied, it does require unanimous vote of the board to reconsider the application. Now, in reconsidering the application, I'd like to stay at a little bit more information first, so that we have an open mind when we recon, do, go up for that vote, whether we want to- want to in fact reconsider it.
Okay.
Okay?
To address the first comment, I understand that, you know, to try to distinguish between dislocation and the, and the other one down the road. But please understand, eight hundred feet, that's what we're talking about is the difference.
But it's the other side of the Teconic, so there's a, there's a very significant barrier in between there. It's separate neighborhoods. Go ahead.
Eight hundred feet. This is Jerry Florrie. He can maybe address your, your question with regards to the, the hours that we, we see it. My understanding and, and again, my knowledge of it is more general than his because he's obviously in the business. But in speaking to him, he was indicating that it's on both sides, meaning people coming home from work who want to grab a gallon of milk because the store is closed, and people leaving early in the morning. But is there a, a spike in that trend, one way or the other?
First of all, I apologize for the signs. My manager put them up. The terminology, they'll come down tomorrow.
Thank you.
That's the one. As far as the eight hundred feet away, there is a proposal to put houses all along the strip in behind it, so that's going to be a residential area. I'm assuming it's going to be approved, assuming that it is.
Well, we, we don't know, and then buyer beware of those houses because in that case, the commercial business would have been there first, so...
Now, as far as the, the time limit?
Yeah.
In the evening, what are arguments, not our arguments?
The extent that you can, could you be closer to the microphone?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Bring it down a little bit.
Thank you.
In the evening, people coming up that work the night shift in places like White Plains, by the time they get back up to us at twelve o'clock, we're closed. Their wife wanted them to bring home milk, bread, whatever.
Yep.
They can't do it. That's one of the requests. So that part of the evening, we would, it would be much better off if it was later that we were able to sell it. In the morning, people are on their way to work earlier.
On the Teconic, absolutely.
And we're ready to open up, and we've got to get open and ready to serve them earlier.
Okay.
So the time span on both ends is what is hurting us. Would hurt us, it does hurt us.
But I'm trying to get a, go ahead.
I think the chair, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think what she'd be interested in knowing is what was your volume while you were open?
Aye.
I'll be without permission, but that you were open to show the demand, if you will, before the morning hour and after the evening.
I mean, if we considered an extra hour till one o'clock in the morning or two o'clock in the morning and then starting at four o'clock in the morning, there's still that gap in between where everything's quiet and closed down. Then, because maybe that's the, you know, the most demand is closer to the midnight and closer to the existing five AM. I'm, I'm asking the question, what did you see? I'll tell you...
The in-between hours, as you're saying, after, say, three o'clock in the morning to, again, well, maybe, in the middle of the, in the middle of the night, it is very quiet. There was a few hours.
Right.
But up to that point, from, say, up until two o'clock or so, it is still quite busy. And then it starts to taper off a little bit. And then it picks up again, starting around four o'clock. And the people, that's when they, you start to see them come in. You do have a time lapse, lapse in between there.
Okay.
And that's when the preparation is done for the morning rush.
Okay.
In that so.
And can I just follow up on that? And prepare, and, and again, further to that, are there certain nights of the week where you're seeing that? Like, do you see that Sunday night or is it really, you know, Monday to Friday kind of thing?
It's during the week mostly, yes.
Okay. So it is definitely, it sounds like it's more commuter...
Sunday night, Sunday night would be a quieter night.
The holiday travel, oh.
No, that would be, that would be until the morning, until, you know, then it, that's it. But up until that point, you're right.
Okay. All right. That's, that's what I was just trying to get at was...
So I'll, I'll speak loudly because he's in front of the microphone, but perhaps we can take a look at our sales data and see if there's something identifiable there, you know?
I think that would be really helpful because what I'm afraid of is that if you are open the twenty-four hours and there's not that regular use, very honestly, I don't want to encourage, it's an easy stop off the Teconic, it, we, we don't want to invite any kind of crime or nuisance or anything like that there, okay? But if it really is, you're recognizing it's regular usage, then you, you know, when, when in fact we get to a public hearing, you'd invite your patrons to join us for the public hearing and let them tell us how important it is for you to have those hours available. That would certainly be helpful, too. All right? We have businesses in town that we know we need to operate. It's in the best interest of the town to have our businesses operating well. But that said, we, there was a lot of public comment because I read the minutes from when you, it came up. There was a lot, there was public comment from the neighbor particularly behind. There were, so there were definitely concerns raised from the neighbors about that twenty-four hour operation. Would they think differently now? I don't know. I can't, maybe they're even, their hours might have changed. You just never know. So I, you know, we'll bring it up, but I, I think we'd like a little bit more information first.
We can give you that data.
All right, because you were, there's no question you were doing it. So let's, tell us what you can about, you know, what, what the volume was.
I can provide you with that.
Okay.
Yeah, one of, one of the things when, when Jerry and I first started talking about the reason for the limitations, you know, when the permit was approved?
Right.
He said to me that finding reliable people during that time...
Oh, help, yes, that's true.
Used to be difficult.
Yeah.
So he was like, you know, when, when this came up at the, back in ninety-nine, he was like, eh, you know, I don't usually find that I get great people in that time slot, so, you know, no big deal. But it was all, you know, regardless of what happened at the two thousand and one hearing...
Right.
He realized as soon as he opened that store that there was a need for, you know, for a full-time store because as you see from that, from the number of signatures that were gathered, right off the bat, people were coming in and saying to them, oh, jeez, you know, I wish you were open a little bit later. I come back up from the city here and, you know, can't pick up stuff for the house and what have you, so...
Can I ask you one more question related to that? Do you remember when in two thousand and one, ninety-nine, or whatever this was, was the other service station on the Teconic still open at that time? Did it close after that or it had already been closed?
It was closed for many years before that.
That's...
Many, many years before that.
Okay. I've been commuting it for a long time. I didn't remember when it closed, so...
The way I, the way I discovered that property, and my sister lives on, on Route eighty-two.
Okay.
Just down a little bit further. And I used to come and visit her holidays, so on and so forth. And I lived in Maia Park, so I came right up there. It was only twenty minute ride, but I came up to Parkway, got off, and I always saw the intersection was quite a good intersection, had four on, you know?
Sure, yeah.
Which is, was a little uncommon. Then later on, I found out that that was the end of the Parkway at one time, at least that's when somebody told me. But I always said to my sons, that would be a great place, and that station was closed. My sons are in their fifties now. That state, they were little boys when I was coming up, and that station was, I don't know when it closed, but it had to be closed for fifteen, twenty years or so forth. And it has a thousand-foot rule when I bought the station. One of the reasons we put that kind of investment into that property, which was everybody said I was crazy to invest that kind of money in that property, but I knew it had a thousand-foot rule. How the thousand-foot rule changed, I don't know, but it did, but...
I was actually asking about a different station. There was, used to be a service station actually on the Teconic in the median.
Oh, in the median.
Just north of By eighty-four.
Yes, yeah, that...
That's the one, I think it was operating.
That was, that was...
When you got your approval.
That was operating.
And it closed after that.
That closed shortly after.
It does bring special circumstances that now there's no other gas readily available close to the Teconic.
You are correct. I didn't realize you were talking about the one that was on the Parkway.
Yeah, the one that's actually in the median and they just landscaped around it.
That was open when we opened and it closed only a short time after we opened.
That's, that's...
I would say probably a year or so.
Okay.
After we opened, if that long.
Okay.
So I, this is something I can relate to because I was in the convenience store business, my family was in the convenience store business, so I understand exactly where you're coming from. And I understand why you want to open twenty-four hours because, and I understand your point too, you want to see where the traffic is.
Right.
But when you're open, believe it or not, the traffic actually does come.
Mm-hmm.
So I think really, from what I'm hearing, I, and I wasn't around when this was first brought up, but I think what I'm hearing is, it's really a matter of what the public says, of what the residents say, of what your patrons say. I think it's really going to boil down to that. I'm very pro-business and I think you have the right to make as much money as you want and stay open as long as you want, as long as the neighborhood agrees with it. Because as was brought up, you're more in a residential area than in the commercial area. And I know from having convenience stores, when you stay open twenty-four hours, certain elements do come in, it does create more of a draw for crime and more issues and more problems. So I think that's what it's going to boil down to, what the people say, really.
Right.
Yeah, there was, back in, I believe it was in, I don't want to misspeak, during one of the prior applications, I don't recall if it was ninety-nine or two thousand and one, there was some question, you know, they, they specifically asked the East Fishkill Police Department, you know, if they had any concerns with the twenty-four seven and whether they thought there would be more crime. Their response at that time was no, but again, you know, that was eighteen years ago.
Times have changed.
So you don't know, whatever. But I do want to point out that it's something that was addressed in one of the prior applications and I know that the police department had responded in that, during that application and said that they didn't really see any real difference there.
Well, like the chair said, we do have twenty-four hour businesses in, in town, so it's, it's not uncommon, but I think just, I think the issue is where you're located. Even though it's eight hundred feet, one's commercial, one's residential, so I think that's really what it boils down to.
And they had vocal neighbors.
And they what?
They had vocal neighbors that came out.
Yeah, and, yeah, and I heard you say that, so I think it's going to be who's more vocal. So, public opinion will probably sway it.
I feel a little uncomfortable in asking for trade data because, I don't know, I mean, it's up to you guys, but one of the things I was thinking about, I mean, is your client owns several gas stations. Are there all, most all of them or all of them open twenty-four seven except for this location?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. So you already have data that there is enough volume coming, so, and again, on Teconic, because I used to live here when there was a gas station on the island of Teconic between northbound and southbound, right by fifty-two, and that used, was operational and I don't remember exactly when it closed.
Right.
But it was an island and it was there, so...
And they kept that route the longest because of the state police.
Oh, is that, oh, yeah, there was a barracks just down this...
Where's the barracks there?
Correct.
They made that special ramp for them.
Correct, correct, exactly right. So, so anyway, so again, I don't know if you're comfortable in bringing closing data or something, but I don't want accurate, I mean, I just want a ballpark number because I don't want your competitors to know what you're doing, especially somebody...
We can provide that.
I mean, again...
We're looking at percentage stuff. We're not looking for...
Yeah, no, we, we'll just give you a general look for a...
Yeah, we're not looking for actual...
Yeah, when, when are the peaks, when are the dips, type thing.
For this board to consider, you heard, already heard me say, it has to be an unanimous vote, but we really should be looking at what's changed, what's, and the world has changed. People are working stranger hours because businesses are now so much toward more twenty-four seven than they used to be. So I think that's one of the circumstances that will help. And so substantiating that, that East Fishkill is also more twenty-four seven, not just locations in Maia Park or in other places, okay? I think it's important for us to get East Fishkill data in that regard. But again, we don't have to read into a record.
Yeah, yeah.
Something that can be provided to us would be really helpful.
The information you're asking before is easy to get you.
Thank you.
I can give you a traffic count, how many rings we do during certain hours. You don't even have to know how much they are if that's what the concern is.
Yeah, yeah.
But the, but the, how many, how many people, how many, you know, how much of the public do we service during certain hours?
That's fine. Well, again...
And as a percentage of your business, I think. I don't need to know whether you do fifty cents or five million, but based on what your figures are doing. When is your customers rushing in? That's what we want to know. Fine.
If you're open, you're going to get more people anyway.
Yeah, see, the thing is, especially, I, I do not know, I mean, I remember there was five thousand feet distance between each gas station, so I don't know how, it has moved to five hundred feet or...
Thousand.
Or, it used to be thousand, but if it's eight hundred feet, so, but maybe it was residential and commercial, maybe that's how they differentiated it. I do not know, you know, what criteria they, they took into consideration to approving the one on the other side of, of your, your gas station, but still, especially because, again, if you feel comfortable in providing the data because it's public knowledge, so even though you, it will eventually get entered into the minutes part of the record, so, again, if you can just, just give some general numbers without giving trade secrets or any kind of...
Yeah, and I said, this is not a problem.
Okay.
This part, that's an easy thing you're asking me to do.
Okay.